This time I'd like to call our regularly scheduled meeting of the Harvest and City Commission, which has been duly posted to order, and at this time I'd like to call upon Commissioner Ruben Del Rosso to lead us in the negotiations.
Heavenly Father, we ask you to bless the city of Harlingen and its city leaders and exploits to make the right decisions in this meeting and every day for its citizens of Harlingen. Lord, I've asked you to protect our police officers and firefighters. Lord, I ask you to bless our businesses in the city and those who seek to come into our city. Lord, bless the leaders of all the churches in Harlingen that worship you. In Jesus's name, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
I can welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. We're glad to have you here. First item on the agenda is a proclamation proclaiming the month of June 2016 as National Home Ownership Month, and we have from the Community Development Corporation of Brownsville, Jeremy Stremler, and also our own Community Development Advisory Board, Juan Conny Salas. Whereas, ownership is the American dream, and it is close to the heart of Harlingen, Texas. There is a special power in the neighborhood where most families own their homes. New homeowner receives a key that does more than unlock a door, represents a place for children to grow, learn, and feel safe, an opportunity to save money, and build equity for the future, and a sense of stability, belonging, and greater community. And just as it builds strong families, homeownership is the building block of strong communities, too. Whereas, thanks to the prosperity of this nation, as we've been going over in the past, there are more Americans are homeowners today than any other time in our history. As mayor, I'm committed to helping more cities, especially those who have been shut out in the past, know the joy of national security and a sense of community that comes with owning their own home. Whereas, the Department of Housing and Urban Development is working in partnership with state and local governments, community groups, and private states to make the most effective use of federal funds for accommodation, housing, counseling, down payment assistance, and closing cost assistance. And whereas, through funding from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, we're helping our residents buy homes and live the lives that once only imagined. And whereas homeownership is good for the homebuyer, Harlingen and our community is the American dream, and during National Home Ownership Month, we re-dedicate ourselves to that dream and to every American who seeks to achieve. Now therefore, I, Chris Potts, Mayor of the city of Harlingen, hereby proclaim the month of June 2016 as National Home Ownership Month, and the city of Harlingen hereby call upon all the citizens of the city to join me in recognizing the importance of providing every citizen with the opportunity to achieve the American dream. So, we have these representatives here from our community development programs, and if they'd like to say something, they'd like to give them opportunity to do that.
We'd like to thank the commission and the mayor and the community development department in our collaboration with helping extend our work in Harlingen outside of just the apartments that we built up in Business Area 3 and extending it to affordable housing for all the citizens of Harlingen.
That was a great project, and we're working together on, and just last, just a few weeks ago, I had to open the area, the mile home that we're still in the open, we provided new families a new home there through programs through CCG, and it's really an experience to get to participate in handing the keys over to a family that worked so long and hard to get into homeownership. And so it's nice that we, as a community, and our city can be part of making that happen. So congratulations to everybody who works on this project and makes it happen for families in our community. Thank you.
Okay.
The second thing we have on the agenda is the Neighborhood Clean Sweep held May 14, 2016, between Aragon Drive and Arden, starting at Arbor, Adrian and Arbor, in District 5.
Good afternoon, Mayor, good afternoon, Commissioners. As you know, we had a Neighborhood Clean Sweep on May 14th, and we had it over there between Aragon Drive and south of Arden, and in between those, there's several streets. We did Arbor, Adrian, and Arbor in Arcadia while we were there. We were there from eight in the morning till twelve o'clock. It is District 5. We picked up 2.89 tons of debris and 22 tires. You can see the backyard there, it's kind of messy. They're the helpers that we had that day, and we picked up all that debris that was behind that house that we took a picture of. Mr. Leal was there, Commissioner Leal was there also.
I'm there in disguise.
That's a little bit of debris on the side of the road. And I want to say thank you to the usual Mr. Delua and his family. Thank you so much. I have a friend of his that goes Tracy Fee also, that she wills. We also had the Judge Doro Hester kids go out there and help us, too. We had also two participants from the neighborhood. They were Ralph Wadup Wadups and Theresa Lopez. They just came out and started helping us. Really appreciate the help, and of course, Commissioner Leal helped us all morning. I really appreciate that also. Thank you, Commissioner. The next one's going to be held this coming Saturday, and it's going to be the citywide one. This is where the entire city can just come. They can go to the Casa Amistad, we'd be there at the parking lot, taking anything you want. We'll take it for free, no charge at all, just bring it on by. If there's anybody that has any questions?
All right. We have some certificates to present. Commissioner Leal, do you want to do that with me?
It's going to be tomorrow, Saturday. It's a little... Ralph Wadups? I think those are the two neighbors that just came out of nowhere and started helping us.
Ray Delua? He has a strong collection of his scullings. And we appreciate the ability to help. I would say, Melvin, after him, and Hannah Vidalis, he brings the team with him. And Commissioner Rick Leal. Okay. Thank you. With the commission's permission, I'm going to, I'm going to skip over items three, four, and five, six. Why don't we do, why don't we do six, then we'll do seven. Six is consider to take action to approve the Destination Park Master Plan Concept for Long Sea Hill Park.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. We've, Dan and I have been brainstorming and visiting, meeting, and kind of coming up with some ideas. We hired a local architect to help us put our ideas on paper, and the reason we came up with this is because a lot of, a lot of things are coming up for Long Sea Hill, and so what we wanted to do is, is kind of master plan Long Sea Hill, making sort of a destination park, and so that when we start building it out, we actually have a blueprint that we can work off of. We could also use this, of course, for, so we can apply for grants. But as you can see, of course, we have a trail all the way around the entire park, comes around the Harlingen Field. What we do is, we, here at Harlingen Field, we can create a venue for concerts, for other events. This canopy here is retractable. We have some basketball courts that are, that are lighted, and then also, of course, this trail will be lighted. We're adding more parking around the Casa Amistad, and then here around by our pool and splash pad, and then, of course, there's a courtyard area, an amphitheater, and all this is just our, our all-inclusive playground. We want to connect that with our existing playground. One other thing that we want to do is here in the corner where there's an existing baseball field, we would like to convert that into a, an adaptive baseball field where kids in wheelchairs or kids that are special need could use that field, so we'd have a special type of surfacing in that baseball field. Over here on this side, we want to, we want to install or construct a volleyball court, and then a dog park right here, and then we have this building that belongs to the city. We'd like to convert it, maybe in the future, into a, what do we call it?
Discovery Center.
Discovery Center. Here is a blow-up of that section on the south part of the Casa Amistad. You can see it, and here's some kind of ideas of what that would look like. This is a concept of the way amphitheater would look, and this would be sort of like the courtyard with some gazebos and so on. And all this would be, you know, where we'd block off traffic. This is J Street. Come across, we would block that off to traffic, so it'd be all one, one area where, where people can walk across without having to worry about traffic.
What we're trying to do is create a true safe zone for kids that are playing in the park, to go to from one component of the park to the other without having to worry about traffic. You have that road that goes behind the Long Sea Hill pool that will remain open, so traffic can still flow easily through there, but they won't, they, they won't have to cut across the front of the swimming pool where the kids are crossing anymore. And we will elevate those areas, the road areas, to the same elevation as the grass, so you won't have that issue of crossing over, especially when you have an all-inclusive playground and you have special need kids that are wheelchair bound. So, different components include large pavilions, bathrooms, an all-inclusive playground. You have, you also have your performing arts theater over to the, to the right. You have your auditorium for indoor events, you have your large stadium for outdoor, large outdoor concert events. So all these components will be located in one location with ample parking. We have lots of events at this area already. We have Freedom Pets, we have the Dallas Cowboys Blues on the Hill. So all these events, these components will complement those events and provide a lot more venues for, for our citizens to use. And not just our citizens, but we believe it'll become a destination park, and visitors will come in from other areas and visit our city for that one.
This lower area, that's basically in front of the boys and girls park, right? For point of reference?
That's exactly right, and if you remember, we partnered with them to expand their bathrooms outside their facility, and one of the reasons we did that is because we knew we were working on this, and so that provides bathrooms on that side of the park now, and you'll also have bathrooms close to the all-inclusive playground, that's what that center structure is, and you would have bathrooms over by the splash park. So you would have plenty of facilities for the kids to use, and not just kids. If adults want to go out there and run the track, run, run the trail, all the components will be there for the entire family.
All right. Does anybody have any other questions about this master plan? If there are none, is there a motion to approve the master plan concept as presented by the staff?
You want to point out the bathrooms? There's one right there?
There's one right here?
There's one over by the dog park that exists right now?
Right, it's...
And the one over by the, the Boys and Girls Club.
Which one?
Where that picture is on the bottom?
The Boise Girls Club is here, and you got the courts on this side, and then so it'll be right at the entrance. And then up on top, we'll have restrooms.
By the basketball, yes?
Yes.
I would like to make the motion that we adopt this plan.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Is there any, is there any other discussion?
One of the discussions was, can we adapt, can we attach, hey, another bathroom to what that is part of, or we have to wait?
This is specifically for this park, Commissioner, and that can be part of the priority planning session that we're going to have on the 24th, and, and for the commission information, the parks and rec board adopted this as one of the top five priorities of this park, so.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right. Item seven is sort of related to the prior item, and that's why I wanted to take that up, let everybody see the master plan concept. But item seven is to consider to take action to accept or deny the donation of $100,000 from Mr. Rollins in compliment to assist with the construction of an all-inclusive playground structure at Long Sea Hill Park and allow the dedication of the playground to be in memory of Emily Koppel.
Mayor, Commissioners, very exciting today to present to you. We have Mr. Koppel in the audience. You know, as you, as you know, we've been talking about this all-inclusive playground that we want to build, and we've, we've kind of already selected Long Sea Hill as, as the location where we want to build it. We've applied to Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation, and we, we hope that we're successful, but we would like to use the donation from Mr. Koppel to help with the funding and to help build that all-inclusive playground. We're very excited, and our plan is, is that when we do, if we do get the funding for it, or when we do get the funding, we'd go out and submit an RFP so that we could select designs, and we'd, of course, give them a budget, what we want to build, so these manufacturers would submit to us their plan for whatever the budget's going to be, and we would select the best, best concept. So, Mr. Koppel's here. I'm not sure if he has anything to say, or if you have any questions.
No. Do we have a slideshow in the playground?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I don't have that. And I didn't...
You saw where that, why don't you show them? Put the slide up with, that shows where the playground would be constructed within Long Sea Hill Park Master Plan that was just approved.
The larger one? Okay. See that green and blue area?
This right here.
That would be the all-inclusive playground, and Mr. Koppel has been generous enough to offer $100,000 to name the playground in memory of his late wife, Emily, Amy Koppel. The staff is recommending approval of the request from Mr. Koppel, and we'd like to put it towards getting one of the components of this park going and constructed. And we have another item coming up soon with a partnership with HTISD for all-inclusive playgrounds.
Also a motion. Second.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed. Well, it's now, as we thank you for the generous donation, Raleigh. I don't know whether you'd like to say something, but I, I just wanted to say a couple of things. One is, the, the idea for this, the concept for this park is really fantastic. I mean, it's truly going to be something that, you know, just doesn't exist anywhere in our community, and certainly doesn't, and may not exist in most of the communities throughout the valley in terms of the accessibility, accessible to, to every child to be able to use the playground equipment at this park. The concept for it is also to you, to be able to have schoolchildren come out during, during the hours, the kind of non-peak hours for, for the rest of the community to come out and use this facility. It's just going to be an absolutely fantastic component, and really does a great tribute to Amy Koppel, who is a longtime educator, taught schools and public schools here for 50 years, what a fitting tribute to her legacy of having dedicated so much of her life to helping the children of our community, and this is a great symbol to her, a great monument and legacy to her. It's going to be a truly lasting and important component of this park, and something that I think the Koppel family is very proud of. Thank you, Raleigh, for your generosity in, in helping us to get this master plan for this park started.
Mayor, if I could just tell you, this is, is, is a dream thing for us. I was, I told the city manager the other day that I went to vote, and there was someone sitting behind, looking at my voting application, and, and he looked about as old as I am, and he said, "Your wife taught me Spanish." So that's how long it's been, you know? This is something she would have loved. And I, the citizens of Palm Valley turned me down because they didn't need too many kids out there. My next offer came from the city of Primera, which I had a little interest in, then I got this call from the mayor, and I, I thought this was a great idea, and I still do. You know, they showed me parks all, all over the city, but this, this, this really appealed to me. You know, as a kid, I swam in the collegiate swimming, American Legion swimming pool out there, of course, and participated in developing the little theater out there, and this is where it is, as far as I'm concerned. And the idea that you're going to have it made accessible to special needs children is particularly interesting and necessary. And so it's, it's a great deal, and I very appreciate the time you spent on it, and the design looks just perfect. It's, it'll be accessible, have plenty of bathroom facilities, plenty of supervision, and for the special needs kids, and, and all in all, it'll be just great, and I know that Amy would approve. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
And the money will be available toward the end of the year, whenever you, whenever you need.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you, Raleigh.
Thank you, Raleigh.
All right. We'll go back then to items to skip, which are items, beginning with item three, which is the approval of amendments, special meeting of March 30th, 2016, regular meeting of March 4th, 2016, special meeting of May 18th, 2016. Are there any additions or corrections to this?
I have a correction on the May 18th. District 1 Commissioner Richard Rebe assured that it should show 476 votes.
Are there any other additions or corrections to the amendments? Hearing now is our motion to approve the amendments.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed, like sign, motion carries. Consent Agenda, items 4A through G, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'm making a motion to be approve the consent agenda, 4A through 4G as presented.
All but, motion, second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item five is consider to take, action to approve the facility use agreement with the city of Harlingen and the Harlingen Aquatic Team for the use of Pendleton Pool and Victor Pool.
Mayor, Commissioners, we're bringing this agreement to you all. We made some changes to it from last year's. The, what we've added to the, to the agreement was, we set a, a day of the month that the payment will be due, and there's a penalty that's applied to that if there is any delinquency on, as far as payment to the city. And then you see underneath on the executive summary, we show the hours and the times of the week that Hat will be in the pool at Pendleton. What he's created this year is a junior team, so they'll be in, in the pool in the mornings, and then we have the sessions when they'll be in the pool during the summer. And we kind of, we were specific as far as the time, the last agreement, we was, it was a little bit vague, so we've kind of made it specific. And what we did, again, this year is, we, we made a change to the time when he gets in the pool during Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays when we have water aerobics. Mr. Tucker has agreed that he would get out of the pool at 6:20, and then he would do conditioning outside the pool on the deck, and I'll give 10 minutes before water aerobics gets in the pool, so there won't be any conflict as far as having two, two different groups in the pool at the same time. And it creates, it alleviates a safety issue for, or liability to the city, so, because of the music and so on. We took this to the, to the Park Advisory Board, Park Advisory Board did make a recommendation to, to the city commission for approval.
How is that going to affect the, what the city's using the pool for? As far as the, the program the city's using, they're using it from 6:30 to nine?
Yeah, we, we, we ran the, the times that we would have the city programs, both during the school year and, and in the summer, and it won't, it won't interfere. There, there's going to be some overlap during the summer. There's going to be about an hour and a half at Victor, so we would allow them to use four lanes on the outside, and then we would use four lanes for the, for the young ones in the shallow.
I'm asking about Pendleton.
Yes.
Because you have them Monday through Friday from 6:00 to 7:30, and you're going to run a program from 6:30 to nine. So how, how are you going to share the lanes, or how's, how's it going to work?
You're talking about 6:00 AM, 7:30 in the morning?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have programs there in the morning for...
You'd have one at night?
Right, but what we're going to do is, they're going to share the, the lanes, so it'll be four and four.
Okay.
On this, he's only paying $200 a month?
Yes, sir.
But he's, he's adding more, more hours?
Yes, he's adding...
So we're leaving the payment the same?
That was a recommendation from the Park, Park Advisory Board.
Seems kind of low for me. Could we increase it another $200?
Does he mean plasters to it? I understand that, but he, yeah, look, he's also providing the service, you know? You've got to be fair with him, I think. And I think, I think he does a good job, I think, as long as everybody's understanding on, I think the confusion at that pool or where any facilities is when they're using, and what times they're using, and who's coming in, who's coming out. Programs, I mean, we shouldn't be in it where we're trying to take away from the, I think if you charge them more, you're going to take away from the kids, and, and that's, that's unfair to kids. My opinion. I don't know whether, I don't know whether the, I don't know whether Mr. Tucker wants
to address the commission, but I mean, I, I mean, this is, he's not doing this to make, he's not doing this to make money. He's doing this to, because he, because he likes, he likes teaching kids to competitively swim and be in a program of this kind, much like the, just like our coaches, like to coach soccer.
And I understand that, there's always been this, I think, like, I mean, I think we...
So it's always, always, they're always looking for more, for more time, so I don't, I think this is, I think this is more, more akin to some of our other youth groups that use our parks or soccer complex.
And in swimming, the, the more time they have in the water, the more beneficial to the, to the athlete.
And I know the Parks and Rec Board, they discuss the time slots pretty extensively, right?
Yes.
Can I clarify something?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I understood that the city programs are in the evening or in the morning, or both?
We have them in both in the mornings and the evenings.
Okay. So they're going to get out earlier in the evening?
Okay, so if they're going to get out earlier in the evening only to make room for that evening shift, but in the morning, we're going to share the pool?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I heard that clearly.
But it's, it's same, it's the same, I don't want to say service, but it's, it's the same thing, because people that are going in the morning are going to lap swim, so it's not going to, it's not going to be different. The reason that we-
It's not the aerobics in the morning?
No.
It's the aerobics in the evening, that's where the music-
Right, the aerobics do come in in the morning, but it's not during this time.
Okay.
So what we do is, we try to work things out because water aerobics has their music on and then they're swimming, so our guards, they have to try to get somebody out of the water. If they blow the whistle, they won't be able to, they won't be able to hear, so.
Understood. I, I, that's what I wanted to clarify, what the difference is between them getting out of the pool because you said it was a dangerous condition versus the second, which we don't have the music involved.
Right, so it could, could be.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the facility use agreement?
Sub move.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item nine, consider to take action to approve facility use agreement with the city of Harlingen and Arroyo Youth Soccer Club for the use of the Harlingen Soccer Complex.
Mayor, City Commissioners, this is the exact same agreement that we brought to you last year. Everything's in place. We've taken it to the park advisory board and they're making a recommendation to the city commission for approval.
This is pretty much the same-
Yes, sir.
-whole process we've been using the last few years. We sort of beefed up the agreements a couple of years, two or three years ago.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve this facility use agreement?
Sub move. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign, motion carries. I'm sorry, I skipped over item eight regarding an interlocal agreement of the city of Harlingen and HCISD for funding limits and operational all-inclusive playground structures.
Mayor and Commissioner, we've been working with the school district, strengthening our partnership with them, doing more and more projects together, sidewalk projects. This is another example of what we've been working on. They've agreed to fund two all-inclusive playgrounds, 50/50 with the city, which is fantastic for our community. We are still working on the language for the agreement, so we're asking this to be tabled until the next meeting. But we're excited about this and I've talked to Art, Dr. Kalas, earlier and they're excited about it. They're going to be able to utilize this during, like the mayor mentioned earlier, during school hours for their special needs kids and their programs. So they're pretty excited about getting both parts up and going.
Do we want to table this? Tables?
Motion to table.
Table?
Motion to table.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, item is tabled. Item ten, consider to take action to approve facility use agreement with the city of Harlingen, Harlingen Women's Soccer League for the use of Harlingen Soccer Complex.
Mayor, City Commissioners, again, this is the same agreement that we had in place last year. Everything's in place, they've provided all the documentation to us and we've taken it to the park advisory board and they're making recommendations for approval.
Make a motion. Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 11, consider to take action to approve the ordinance on first reading to amend three sections of chapter six, animals of the city of Harlingen Code of Ordinance.
At the time we adopted that new animal control ordinance recently, we were also adopting our new code. So those two kind of went simultaneously. And in the process, there were some areas that just needed to be cleaned up through housekeeping. Senior Animal Control Officer Shannon Harville came to me and pointed out these three areas that I have in this ordinance. And what we did is, they were, they were in conflict with the old, with the old code that was already there. So these, these three sections, adjusting the fine that had been put in the new ordinance to reflect, by the fine consistent with the rest of the code. The other, the other correction was to, was to adjust one section of the old code. I talked about having no more than three animals and as you know, to the new ordinance, we, we made it five animals, so we corrected that. And then we had, in a section on inhumane treatment of animals, we had a section that didn't really fit there. So we took that out and that's covered in other sections. So that's what the ordinance is about, it's really just a housekeeping. We'd ask the, ask the commissioner for-
Okay, would you read the caption?
Oh, okay. The ordinance amending the city of Harlingen Code of Ordinance is amended section six dash one forty-six dot two, setting maximum fine $500. Section six one fifty, setting the maximum number of dogs or cats at five. Section six dash one twenty-one eliminating subsection C from that section to eliminate an inconsistency, providing for separability, providing for publication, and other than any other matters pertaining to the full building.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item twelve, consider to take action to adopt resolution approving the one-year action plan and budget for fiscal year 2016, 17, year 42, community development block grant CDBG program in fiscal year 2016 through 17, year 22, of a home investment partnerships program. Tammy.
Good evening.
Please let the record reflect that Commissioner Mesmar has left the room and filed the appropriate affidavit of the sentence. Excuse me?
No, we have four.
Yeah. We have four.
We're good.
On May 4th, the commission approved the budget that was presented to them and the recommendation of the community development advisory board. We're required to have a 30-day comment period before you finally approve the budget, before we draft the one-year action plan and send it to HUD for approval. We've had that 30-day comment period, we received no comments, so if you approve the resolution, then we'll draft the one-year action plan to submit to HUD.
Okay, is there a motion to, to approve the resolution adopting the budget?
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 13, is considered to take action to approve a substantial amendment to the city of Harlingen's 2014, 15, one-year action plan of the amount of $55,000.
Last year, there were unexpended admin funds carried over from prior years, so we had additional funds that we wanted to allocate towards projects and it would help us with our expenditure ratio. So in order to have a substantial amendment, if you're going to change the use of CDBG dollars at $50,000 or more, add a new activity or delete an activity than what you originally had in your one-year action plan, you have to go through a substantial amendment. We put it out for public comment, we haven't received any comments. The community development advisory board recommended allocation of the funds, which would be 55, 20,000 to the Boys and Girls Club and 35,000 to the clearance and demolition program. I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Pretty straightforward, I think. Is there a motion to approve the amendment?
Sub move.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. As opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mesmar can come back in. Item 14, consider to take action to approve a resolution authorizing Texas Gas Service Company's cost of service adjustment, approving a joint review by TGS application along with other cities served by TGS, hiring legal and consulting services. To negotiate with the company and direct any necessary litigation appeals requiring TGS to reimburse all reasonable costs associated with city's efforts in this rate-making effort. Game.
Mayor, members of the commission, Texas Gas Service has applied for a cost of service adjustment. The resolution will allow us to hire the law firm of Lloyd Goslink, specifically Jeffrey Gay, to review the COSA and negotiate with the company if necessary. Any legal fees will be reimbursed by Texas Gas Service, so staff is asking the resolution to be approved.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the review?
Sub move. One second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Item 15, consider to take action to adopt an ordinance on first reading to abandon and vacate a 10-foot public utility easement described as 0.03 acre tract, land out of lot 10 and lot 11, Sam D. Brown subdivision, and finding this abandonment to be in the public interest and serving a public purpose by allowing commerce to proceed in the city of Harlingen.
Several weeks ago, Pauline Zerovek, who's with Keller, she's here with Keller Williams, commercial realty approached me about the problem they were having because of an old utility easement on this property. It's there in yellow and then if you flip through there, this subdivision was created back in 1951 by Mr. Sam Brown and in that he dedicated easements for streets and utilities that were, we never asked for or never needed. Well, over the years, this building there at that location, the old brown tire building as I remember it as a kid, but anyway, was built and it's actually over the easement. Well, the easement was never used and all the utilities are in the alley behind there and I provided you with letters from all the utilities saying that they have no problem with it being vacated. And the reason we're asking the, the commission to pass an ordinance to vacate this is so that, so that they can proceed to sell the building and I believe she's told me that an air conditioning business is trying to buy the building, move in and establish a business there. And this easement is of no use to us, we never asked for it. So we're, we're trying to pass a legal document that can be filed in the county clerk's office.
What's the building now?
The building is vacant now and according to Ms. Zerovek, I drove out there today, it's been vacant for approximately two and a half years.
But it's off of what street?
It's off of, it's off of 77 Sunshine Strip, 1402, 1403, and it used to be a tire store, GCR tires. They're now across the side street, but it's been sitting vacant for two and a half years. And if we can perform this legal step here to vacate that easement, we can get this building sold and, and get it back on the tax rolls. So we're asking the court to approve this, approve this ordinance.
Okay, you want to read the caption?
Ordinance abandoning a 10-foot public built easement described as a 0.03 acre tract, land out of lot 10 and lot 11, Sam D. Brown subdivision, and finding city utilities and abandonment is in public interest and serves a public purpose.
Make the motion, you adopt.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, good luck with the project. All right, item 16, board appointments. Commissioner DeMme, board appointments.
I know I need to, I'd like to re, reappoint Mr. DeMme to the- He's not here. I might have to-
Any others? Go really out to EDC. You can-
I have none.
Okay, I have reappoint Chuck Mattingly to civil service commission, George McShans to community development advisory board, Land Flores to community development advisory board, Ms. Martinez to construction board, Justice of Fields, Hades and Ponce to construction board, Fields, Carlos Fuentes Gulf Advisory Board, Phil Boxer Parks Advisory Board, Meg Jarama PNC, Nick Consiglio PNC, Juan Salas Senior Citizens Advisory Board, Mike Forman Tennis Advisory Board. Do we still have the Tennis Advisory Board? But we, I think, maybe we still do, but Sal, and Sal Carmona to the Veterans Advisory Board, those appointments are reappointments. Is there a motion to approve the appointments and reappointments?
Sub move, Mayor. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 17, is executive session pursuant to chapter 551, subchapter D, VTC, Texas government code, section 551.087, 551.071, and 551.072, regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, including consideration and deliberation concerning the sale of city property. Is there any reason why we can't take these both up at the same time?
No.
Item 18 is executive session, attorney consultation, percent, section 551.071, Texas government code to provide legal advice and counsel in connection with certain collective bargaining issues contained in the notice, intent to bargain dated March 11, 2016, intended by a newly recognized majority bargaining agent for the city's law enforcement officer, the Harlingen Police Officer Law Enforcement Association. Is there a motion to go on to executive session, items 17 and 18?
Sub move. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're now in executive session and the city commission will be in the conference room in the back to discuss matters with their attorney and there may be action on item 19. Okay, we're out of executive session at 6:43. Item 19, consider to take action to authorize the city manager to negotiate and repair and execute the necessary documents for the sale of land as discussed in executive session. Is there a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate, repair, and execute the documents for the sale of land as discussed in executive session?
Sub move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 20, no one has signed up for city's communication, so we are adjourned. Thank you all very much for tonight.